Sure. No problem. Oh, yeah, I just was turning my phone off.
Are we ready to start, Jason? Okay, thank you. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our first-ever teleconference Village Board work session. So I think we'll get through this all right. We might have a few glitches along the way, but I hope you'll understand, and we'll get through this together. First, I'd like to do a roll call, just to make sure everybody's on. I can see that Barbara, are you on, Deputy Mayor?
Yes, I'm here. I'm here.
Arthur Graham, are you on?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Rose Brown, can you hear me?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Becky, Village Administrator, are you on?
Here.
And June is on as well, Secretary?
She's not on the feed, but she is. Beth Baldwin is also here.
All right, and Beth, you're there. And Chief Tracy, are you on? Chief Tracy, are you on? Okay. Okay, he's on. All right, thank you. So let's get started. Please, to first stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, just remind everybody that if you're not speaking, to please mute your microphone. It'll help the situation. I understand that Yu King is not here this morning, Barbara, but you have a message from him, I believe?
I do. Because he isn't here, he wanted to make sure that everybody went to the LTV website and pulled up the winter lecture, that was the Historical Society Winter Lecture Series of 2018, and it was on the flu epidemic of 1918, done by Hillary Malecki, Hillary Osborn Malecki. It was a great lecture, and it was fascinating, especially in lieu of what we're going through right now. So he wanted everybody to make sure they went to the LTV website. It actually was on LTV last night. I happened to catch it, so I think they are showing it regularly. But if not, they can pull it up and watch it on their computers at home.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. All right. I just want to remind everybody that you'll have an opportunity to speak. Anybody that's tuned in and would like to speak, we have a phone number that's going to be broadcast along the bottom of our screen, and that call-in number will be, or is, 351-888-6331. Just to repeat again, that call-in number is 351-888-6331. So first thing on the agenda, I just want to give an update on the situation with the coronavirus. These are the latest figures as of yesterday afternoon, but this is changing almost on an hourly basis. I won't have the new numbers until later this afternoon. But again, as of yesterday afternoon, the total amount of positives for COVID-19 in Suffolk County was 7,605. Unfortunately, 69 of those were deaths. Currently, 897 people hospitalized throughout the county. East Hampton Town now has 26. East Hampton Village is still at 4, as I said, but these numbers are changing almost hourly. I'm not sure that this number 4 for the village is accurate. In fact, I think it's a little bit less than that, but I won't know until it's confirmed later this afternoon. Something new that I can announce, they've opened a mobile test site in Riverhead now, but this is privately run. It's not state-run. So I'm told that in order to avail yourself of this test site, that you have to have health insurance. But it's run by the Riverhead Pro Health Facility. It's by appointment only. It's at 1149 Old Country Road in Riverhead, and it's open from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. seven days a week. If you'd call 1-516-874-0411, they'll triage you over the phone, and if you meet their criteria, you'll be given an appointment to go in. I also want to remind everyone that the state testing site at Stony Brook is still open. That's at Stony Brook Campus, South Lot P, and the number for that is 888-364-3065. And again, you'll be triaged over the phone, and if you meet their criteria, then you'll be given an appointment to go in. Another important number that everyone should remember is 311. You can call that number with any issues that you have with the coronavirus, in particular, those small businesses that we know are going to be negatively impacted by this. If you call that number, they'll refer you to the proper agency that can give you help. Again, just to go over what we've done at our village level, we've, of course, limited our nonessential staffing to 50% or below. Village Hall and all of our buildings, other than the EMS, the Police and Fire EMS building, are closed to the public. We would prefer that, if you can, you do whatever business you do with us, you do via email or by phone. But if you absolutely have to interact with us, you can come to Village Hall, either call a number or knock on the door. Somebody will come and assist you with what you need. I just add an addendum to my emergency declaration this morning, allowing us to have this teleconferencing for Village Board meetings. And again, hopefully, this will be extended to all of our public meetings in the near future. We're working on accomplishing that as I speak. Again, to recoup, all permits that would have expired in the next 60 days are extended for 60 days at no fee, so it will not cost anybody any money to renew them for 60 days, and we'll revisit that as the case requires. Herick Park is still open, but the playground equipment at Herick Park is closed and will be closed until further notice. Of course, they're asking now that nobody gathers, even in public places, no gatherings at all, no birthday parties, nothing like that. And you can get most of this information, or just about all of this information, if you refer to our website or Facebook, the Village website or the Village Facebook page. Again, they're expecting the worst of this crisis to peak in about two or three weeks. And so keeping that in mind, you should all remember to keep social distancing. Now, they're asking that if you have one, you wear a mask. Obviously, cover your mouth if you have a cough or a sneeze. And even if you don't have a commercial mask, a pre-made mask, you could make your own, or just use a scarf to cover your mouth and nose when you go out. That'd all be very helpful. Of course, wash your hands frequently with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. Use antibacterial wipes. But most importantly, again, please stay at home for this next 15 days, and hopefully, we'll get through the worst of it by then. And in order to remind people about that and not gathering, we've removed some of the benches from the Village Business Core and from our beaches. We've also cordoned off the permanent bench on the deck of the pavilion at Main Beach. Again, just to kind of remind people that they shouldn't gather and loiter, even if it's in a public place. Again, if you feel sick, or if you've recently traveled here from New York City, they're asking everyone to please self-quarantine for 14 days. Again, if you feel sick with cough, fever, or congested lungs, call your doctor and take whatever advice that he gives you. One other reminder, since this has been going on, and people have been wearing rubber gloves and masks when they go out, and particularly when they're shopping, a lot of people have been just dropping them on the ground. And that seems to have become a real issue for us. So I would remind everyone to please dispose of their rubber gloves and their masks in the proper receptacle when you're finished with them. That would be a big help. So thank you very much. Also, I want to remind everybody, in an effort to thank our healthcare workers and our first responders, there's going to be a, I guess you would call it a clap-in event at 7:00 this Friday night and every Friday night. So we're asking people to please go out into their yards at 7:00 and have a loud round of applause for all of our healthcare workers and first responders, so we can show them how much we appreciate what they've done. And I think that's a great gesture. Anybody else have anything?
I have something that I'd like to just reiterate, Rick, and echo some of what you said, and just express really my gratitude to everyone on the front lines, our doctors, our nurses, our healthcare professionals. I was also going to mention the 7:00 acknowledgement of those people, you know, by coming out and clapping and a shout-out to them. Also thankful for our police department and our fire department. Just the other night, they had a pretty substantial fire, which required mutual aid. We thank those departments as well. I'd also like to thank EMS, shout-out to Lisa Chard for her leadership and what they're doing every day for us. All of our village workers, our DPW, we know their schedule has been modified, but they're still doing the essential work. And, you know, we want the village to know, really, that we are continuing with our work. In a couple minutes, we're going to be talking about budget issues regarding the tax cap and truck traffic on North Main Street. But really, our highest priority right now is the health and safety of all of our residents, our employees, and our community, and that's of paramount importance. And we are closely monitoring the situation. You know, all of us have a daily call with the county, with Steve Malone and his office, along with other supervisors and mayors and their board members, just to be apprised of the situation. And we're closely monitoring the situation, and we'll get through this together. And I just want everyone, as you mentioned, to be really diligent and continue being diligent and adhering to all those guidelines and the safety measures. And just a broad, big thank you to everybody who's involved.
Thank you.
I would like to add, yeah, I would like to add, in this time of social distancing, we all can feel that we are socially isolated from our friends. I was pleased to participate in a virtual cocktail hour a couple of days ago, where a friend of mine, who lives by herself, just, you know, set up a Zoom phone call and invited a whole bunch of friends, and we all sat around and chewed the fat for an hour, safely ensconced in our own homes. I mean, we don't have to be alone. We just have to be away from each other at the moment. So for what that's worth, that was very interesting and fun to do.
Thank you.
It's nice to reach out to your neighbors. You're right. A little kindness will go a long way in these times.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, so first thing on the agenda is a discussion about overweight trucks. As we all know, the recently completed project of raising the bridges at Acabonic and North Main Street have created the ability for large trucks to come down Main Street, where they used to go down Cedar Street, and now they are able to come down Main Street, turn left, and go up North Main Street, or wait and turn left on Acabonic Highway and get under that bridge. The problem that we are concerned about, and which was very evident last summer, and I'm sure will become even more evident this summer, is that the left-turn lane from Main Street onto North Main Street backs up very quickly when we have the high traffic volume that we have in the summertime. It backs up into the intersection of Newtown Lane, and then very often, people on Newtown Lane are unable to get out at their green light. And sometimes takes one or two cycles of the light for those people to get out. So it's going to be felt even worse now with the big trucks coming down that are 65 feet long. And if you get two of those trucks in a queue to turn left, it'll virtually make it impossible for anybody else to get in that lane. And then if cars don't realize, you know, our visitors that are not so familiar with the area, if they don't realize, they could go right and go down a little bit further and make their turn or get into that area through access to Amagans and Abraham's Path, then they're going to stop, and they're going to back up to the intersection. It's going to become that much worse. So that's what this proposal is about. So does anybody else have any thoughts? Barbara?
I have to, sorry, I have to unmute my mic there. Yeah, we've definitely seen a huge increase in the number of trucks that are going past our house since the change with the bridges. And, you know, Acabonic, especially when you get under the bridge, is a very narrow, windy road. So I think it's a good move. I don't think it's something that we want to see an increase in truck traffic on either of those streets. So I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Tiger?
Yeah, Ricky, I think that the Acabonic Road, you know, unless it's a local delivery, I see no reason why heavy trucks should be on Acabonic or driving, you know, turning left at the light by CVS. However, I think the issue that I have is the left turn, not the truck traffic on Main Street. I think North Main Street is a good way for trucks to head north, you know, in the town. I think you're absolutely right that the left turn off the highway is really problematic. I think the trucks coming from the east, concern the, you know, one of the other roads, Abraham's Path or whatever, I think that they probably will still, because they're going to want to stay away from the village as much as they can, especially if we restrict that left-hand turn to trucks. But I don't know to keep the truck traffic off North Main Street. I mean, they can still come down Cedar left on North Main to get up into the northern parts of the town. I'm just not sure that a weight limit, per se, is what we need to do. But frankly, in the years, I would defer to Chief Tracy, who knows more about traffic, or has forgotten more about traffic than I've ever known. So I'd like to see what Mike says.
Okay. Rose, do you have any comments? Rose, can you hear me?
Well, I, yes, I can. I agree with you that left-hand turn, you know, by Citarello there is an issue. It does get backed up, that queue. I've seen it. We've all sat in it. So that's an issue. But, you know, I'm interested to hear what Chief Tracy and perhaps our Superintendent of Highways as well, you know, has to say about that. And I assume this will be also a public hearing that we'll be having in the near future, you know, for people to weigh in about it as well. I know we got a letter indicating that the town was in favor of the limitation for the trucks, the heavy trucks, for only local delivery, which would mean DPW would still be able to use North Main Street and Acabonic, so with school buses. But again, yes, I think it's something for us to consider.
Okay, thank you. And just a reminder, we're talking about only North Main Street, only in the village. So trucks would still be able to come down Cedar Street, as they have been, and make the left on North Main Street to continue up on Springs Road or Humble Harbor Road.
And we're considering Acabonic and North Main Street.
Yes, yes, right. Chief Tracy, are you on? Chief Tracy? Okay, so we're having a little bit of technical difficulty with Chief Tracy. Just give us a minute. You can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay. Yep. Go ahead.
Yeah, we had spoken about this in the fall, the possibility of looking at both bridges or one bridge. And I agree that the turns off of Route 27 on Acabonic would be pushing a tremendous amount of traffic through the residential district. Currently, as we all know, the bulk of the large truck traffic comes down Cedar Street. The primary concern I had was getting the town board's approval and their input, and the town supervisor, the board, and also Steve Lynch, who is extremely knowledgeable about heavy truck traffic. And he's knowledgeable about the amount of commercial industry down there on Springs Road, which is where the bulk of the trucks go. So given the fact that the board, the town board and the town highway superintendent are on board, I don't think it's a bad idea to give this a try. If you put the law into effect, if it passes, I would assume that by summer, we would have this legislation in play. If it turns out that is a hardship or a bad move, the law could be suspended and replaced or modified. The problem with not putting it into play now would be if we have a large problem at the intersection of North Main and 27 in the middle of the summer, we'll be virtually powerless to do anything about it. So I think this would be the time, if we're going to act on this, this would be the time to do it and to try it and move forward.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief. Yeah, thank you very much. Anybody else have any other comments?
It's a good point that the chief has, that if we put it out there, and we could always modify it and adjust it if necessary, but at least we have the mechanism to mitigate the traffic in some way if we need to.
Okay.
Right. I think that's absolutely, I think that's correct. Certainly, as I said, I will to the chief. We can have it in place. I wouldn't mind. You know, we're going to have to have a public hearing on this. And at that hearing, I would like to hear from some of the folks that drive those trucks, to see, because they don't want to be stuck in traffic any more than anyone else does. If they're not moving, they're not making money. So I think that we should certainly go to a hearing on this, and I think that we should get it in place we can, barring a huge public outcry.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so are we in agreement that we should notice it for a public hearing?
Yes.
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 Okay. Becky? Becky, you on?
Yeah, so you can put on a resolution at the meeting on April 17th to notice the hearing for the May 15th meeting.
Great. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just interrupt you one second? I just can't stress enough how important it was and how important it is that our partners in the town and Tom Highway have weighed in on this and are in agreement. I think that was just, that was key, because this has an impact on their infrastructure. It has an impact on the businesses that they are working with. So I think it was very good getting their agreement and their opinion on this, and that we did it jointly between the two municipalities.
Great. Thank you for your comments. I appreciate that. Okay, next on the agenda is the fiscal year tax cap. Just as a note, we do this every year. We've done this every year that I can remember since the tax cap has been required. And as I recall, Becky could probably confirm this. She'll give us her information on this. I believe we only used it twice for just a very little bit, and they were for extremely good reasons. One saved us some money on financing, and actually, I think both of them did at the time. And it was only for a very small amount, if I recall, $20,000 or $30,000, I think, when we did it. So this has been advantageous for us. Just because we pass it, if we do, does not mean that we're going to use it. And as I said, we've only used it twice, if I recall. Becky, you may be able to correct me on that, but I think it was twice. So I'm going to ask Becky if she would just give us the information on this, please.
Okay. The current fiscal year that you're in, your budget is actually under the tax cap by about $10,000. So what is proposed for this year, and you see the calculations that you have, that it's not just calculated as a 2% over the amount of your levy in your prior fiscal year, but that there are a number of factors that go into the calculations. One of them is known as your tax base growth factor, which is, as it says, the growth in your tax base, which is new construction within your village. And then the other factor is called the allowable growth factor, which is tied to inflation. So if that number is less than 2%, then you use that number. If that growth factor is over 2%, then you are limited at 2%. So you can see the calculation for the upcoming 2020, 21 fiscal year. With those numbers, in addition to pilot payments that the village receives, which are payment in lieu of taxes for properties that are not on the tax rolls, those amounts are removed from the calculation. And you'll see, based on this year's tax levy, with all of those factors in, the tax levy increase is proposed to be limited at $363,515. So that is less than what the current year limit, the current fiscal year's tax limit was capped at $372,000. You currently are under that, as your tax levy increase under this year's budget was about $363,000. So as I am starting to develop the tentative budget with the department heads, that number will be important moving forward, especially as we're continually reviewing revenues, you know, whether there's going to be any changes, any decreases. You know, we're watching all of those things closely, in addition to how that may impact the village's contribution to the retirement system next year. So I provide you these numbers to think about whether or not passing the local law to override the tax cap, which, as the mayor indicated, the village has done every year since the state legislature implemented this as a state law. Not every year has the village surpassed the tax cap, but in recent years, it was a very small amount, again, as the mayor indicated, so as that the village would not incur any long-term borrowing on debt for capital projects. So the question really here is if the board wishes to adopt the local law to pass the cap, again, over the next couple of weeks, as the tentative budget is developed, we'll have a better idea whether or not the $363,000 is a reality or not. But at least you have the legislative mechanism in place that if it does happen, that... But at least you have the legislative mechanism in place that if it does happen, that it's already done. You could notice, because this is subject to a public hearing at the April 17th meeting, again, for the May 15th meeting. The only requirement under state laws, if you are going to adopt it, is as long as it's adopted prior, that before your budget is actually adopted.
Okay, so we would note, I'm sorry, we would notice this at the April 17th meeting for the first meeting in May, correct?
For the May, for the May meeting, not the work session. So you could notice it on April 17th for a hearing on May 15th. Your budget does not get adopted until the month of June.
All right.
Yeah, I think it's important to do it. We've done it every year. It's really more of a release valve, you know, if needed. I mean, we don't always need it. We've, we haven't usually used it. But if at the last minute we find out we're going to have some kind of expense we weren't prepared for, we can put it in the budget that way. So I think it's a good idea.
Again, some of, some of the revenues, again, that we're looking at are mortgage recording tax, sales tax. You know, the state legislature is supposed to vote on a budget bill today, tomorrow. And as I mentioned yesterday, we're watching the transportation aid monies that we get from the state, which fluctuates between $200,000 to $300,000. So fingers crossed that there are no cuts in that aid as well. Because if you wanted to continue certain projects, you might have to raise that through property tax revenue. But again, we're closely watching all the revenues.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, any comments?
I'm in, yeah, I'm in favor of this too. I mean, it's going to the cap. But as Barbara says, you know, sometimes you need a safety valve. And in uncertain times like this, we really have no idea what's coming at us.
Yes, I'm in favor of it as, yeah, I'm in favor of it as well. It's a good mechanism to have in place, especially in light of the circumstances and how some of our revenues might be in flux and so forth.
Okay, thank you very much. So Becky, can we put that down? Appreciate that.
Yep, yep.
All right, so now we only have one resolution left. So I make a motion to adopt Resolution 18-2020 to accept and acknowledge the gift of $83,333.33 from Ronald S. Louder towards the Dominique Shop Restoration Project. I have a second.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? None, so carried. All right, thank you very much. Just so everybody knows, this is the last part of, I believe it was a $250,000 donation. So this is the last part of that, and it's very welcome. And again, thank you very much to Ronald Louder. Okay?
Yes.
Anybody else? Okay, so now we're at the public portion comment of the meeting. First of all, before I go to the public, does any, any board member have anything else to say?
Yeah, Ricky, I've got a couple of things to say. First, you put the relaxing of the sign rule to let restaurants put takeout signs in their window. I believe that expires on April 8th, and I think we should extend that. I don't know if we need to do that in a meeting here, but I, we need to extend that, help small businesses as much as we can. You know, maybe we just decide to extend it, or the state relaxes the rules on the restaurants?
Yeah, no, that's my prerogative, and that's, that's my intention, and I will extend it.
Yeah, I think it's very helpful for the restaurants to know, for the public to know that they're open. So, yeah, I'd be in favor of extending it as well.
Okay. Barbara? It, oh, sorry.
Yes, I'm totally in favor of it, yeah. But I assumed you were going to do that since things have been extended now.
Absolutely, okay.
That hadn't been extended yet, though, right?
No, I haven't extended mine, no, but I intend to. But yes, with everything that's going on at the state level, of course.
Okay, another thing that, yeah, another thing that was mentioned is that since the, our building inspectors are no longer doing any interior inspections, I understand that there are several, you know, certificate of occupancies that need to be closed out, and they can't be closed without an interior inspection. It was suggested to me that we might have, I take on the ability to do video inspections internally directed, you know, so the contractor can be inside the house with a video camera or an iPhone or whatever, and the building inspector can be outside the house directing the contractor with the camera at what he wants to see, so that we can actually close out some of these COs. I think that, you know, a lot of things depend on them. And if we can get these closed out, be good for everybody. I mean, we can't totally stop what we're doing as a village. I mean, we have a responsibility to do this stuff. I understand, or I've been told, I don't know for a fact, but I understand that Sag Harbor has been doing this to close out some of theirs. So that is something I think we ought to consider. I don't know if it will require a change in the code or not, but, you know, we could then, as soon as we're able to do physical inspections, we can go in. If the building inspector finds that somebody was pulling some mannequins on the video inspection, there can be substantial fines.
I'm not sure if it's necessary to do video now that the job sites are pretty much shut down. It seems like they should be able to go inside and do interior inspections if, you know, a contractor in charge could meet them there. Wouldn't that be possible? I think they, they stopped doing interior inspections because of the, the number of workers that were on sites. Isn't that right?
Yeah, that's, that's true.
The building department is doing.
Go ahead, Becky.
They are doing inspections, interior inspections on a property that's vacant.
Okay, so that should be easier to do now. I don't think they need to do video. I think they can just do the inspections.
Yeah, so I'm in discussions, I'm in discussions with village, building inspectors and Becky and Beth about this subject. We've checked with Sag Harbor, they are in fact not doing video inspections. They're doing exactly what we're doing. If the house is vacant, we do an onsite interior physical inspection, inspection. And if it's not, then we don't. But I think Barbara is right. Now that these construction sites have been shut down, it's very possible that we can do a few more of these inspections and maybe get some of these COs issued. But certainly, it's, we can discuss it. That's, I think there are very, various issues with allowing, you know, somebody that's not a new village employee or village inspector doing it, even if the village inspector is on the outside. I'm not so sure that he can see everything that he might need to see. But we certainly could have a discussion about it, yes. Anybody else?
I can't hear anything.
You were very broken up there, Rick.
Okay, so as were you. So maybe we're having a little bit of problem. But basically, Sag Harbor is not doing video inspections, just to confirm that. And now with the job sites shut down, we should be able to do a lot of our inspections because we're able to do that when the, when there's nobody at the house, when there's been nobody at the house for, for some time. So we should be able to catch up on some of these inspections.
Okay, good.
Anybody else?
And I have one, yeah, I have one last thing. I know, Rick, that you, as mayor and deputy mayor, have done some interviews with LTV, with WLNG and WPPB, and you're up on your Elms Party website. I think it would be a really good idea for you to put those videos on the village website and the village Facebook page, because not everybody can get to your website. I mean, it makes it sound political. I don't believe that that was your intent. Put them on the village Facebook page.
Sure, I'll talk to Becky about it. That's not a problem, sure.
Okay, because there was good information in there. I'm done.
Anybody else?
I agree.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to a public comment if we have anybody. Again, the number is 351-888-631. So anybody who would like to comment can call in. We'll just give them a few minutes.
Mr. Mayor, maybe you can do a little song and dance while we're waiting.
It's not my forte. I will, however, announce that as a result of a meeting, oh, about a month ago, between myself and the chief of police with representatives of OLP, they indicated to us that it would be nice if we could purchase some cell phones and make them available to sector cars so that if there is a problem with language, that they could call, use those to call the language line and get an interpreter almost immediately. We wouldn't have to wait and call an interpreter in. So we have in fact done that, excuse me. We have in fact done that, and we have those phones now, and they should be active within the next few days. And there will be one, and at least two of the patrol cars, so that we'll be able to better serve our Latino community. So I just wanted to make that announcement. Anybody, any, I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we'll just give it another minute or two. If nobody calls, then we'll adjourn the meeting.
Maybe I'll just mention, too, that we were supposed to talk about the Herrick Park Improvement Plan. LaGuardia was supposed to give a presentation today, but we figured in light of the situation and the fact that we're using new technology, that it would be better to postpone it till the next meeting. So I just thought I'd mention that as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, I guess we have nobody calling in, so well, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
It's a little jarred.
I guess. All right, a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Tiger made it.
Second.
All in favor?
Second.
All in.
Be well and be safe.
Aye.
Okay, okay, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.